Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. We have a quorum present with Council members McKenzie, Arnold, and Gay. And so at 7:30, 2:00 PM, I will call the meetings order at this time. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Walker is doing our invocation this evening.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, and City Council people, I have a word to say before the invocation, and that word is to thank you all for being supportive of the Chaplains program with the College Park Police Department. This is our...
Can you bring the microphone up, Chap? Thank you so much.
I think again.
There we go.
Is that good?
Yes, sir.
This is our... This month, we're celebrating our nine and a half years of a program that maybe was to be a year long, but we've done very well.
It was meant to be true.
Huh?
It was meant to go on through.
Okay. Anyhow, we're here to serve the Police Department, to somehow do our duty to comfort people and to respond to their needs, so that we're in some respects there to comfort the afflicted and in some ways afflict the comforted. So, we do our best in a nonjudgmental way to help people reflect on who they are, why they are, and how they want to be as part of College Park. So, thank you all for letting this happen. With that, may the words of thy mouth and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord. As we pause for our invocation, before our Mayor and City Council, and all the department heads, and people who work in authority for our city, we give you thanks for all of these people, for who they are as well as for what they're doing, and/or what they're striving to do, to be able to create a better form, or forms, for us to live in, so that we can have the feeling of being seen and heard. We pray, oh Lord, that you look with your grace upon all the citizens of College Park in these troubled times, in these stressful times, with all of the disorganization and unsure feelings that we have about being who we say we want to be, a city being able to bear witness to the best of humanity, so that we can have locally as well as nationally a more perfect union and a more perfect fellowship. Inspire all of us as we speak about eternal truths, and how these eternal truths fit in with social truths. Help us to be mindful of the power and the importance of being open, honest, no illusions, but compassion, searching for understanding. Comfort us, oh Lord, as we're here trying our best to infuse into our destiny and the destiny of our own city and state and nation, a way to be more human, more open and inviting. Help us to know that as we try to infuse spirit and life into our social programs, help us to be aware that we're trying to find a way to help rescue all of those who've had long hazardous journeys, unfortunate journeys. Help us to find a way to be sure that we communicate to people that we need their support to embody a way of love thy neighbor as thyself. Hopefully by provoking our...this power, we can comfort people who've had to live very hazardous ways, and we're seeking to help people to outlive our longest nights. We offer our thanks to you, to the council, and the City of College Park, for the privilege of being here invoking your name, invoking your presence, so that we can be better people and better citizens, in the name of faith, hope, and love. Amen.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, residents of College Park, I bring before you the Civility Pledge, which reads, "The way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take. Our collective decisions would be better when different views have had the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all input. We commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other." I ask anyone who elects to come before the panel to speak this evening, please remember the Civility Pledge.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Manager, citizens and visitors. I'm Deputy Chief Randall Slaughter. I would like to read a safety message on behalf of Fire Chief Sterling Jones. In the event of a fire or emergency, please remain calm and proceed to the nearest exit. Exit signs are clearly marked throughout the building. Follow the direction of College Park staff to designated assembly areas. Once outside, please remain at the assembly point until further instructions are given by fire personnel. If you notice smoke or fire during the meeting, please alert staff immediately and follow evacuation instructions. Your safety is our priority. Thank you for your attention, and let's have a productive meeting.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Deputy Chief. Are there any additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
May I interject for a moment? I'd like to request to read a statement into the record.
No, ma'am. So, any additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda?
I have a couple.
All right, Councilmember?
We need to remove Item L.
I'm sorry?
Item L.
Item L. Is that 9L?
It'll be 9L, regular business.
"Consideration of an action on a request between the City of College Park and TSW designed to provide technical advice and professional services to the city for conceptual drawings and plans for the Roderick Gay Botanical Gardens."
We voted on this already, from the last agenda, it was approved. So, it's on here twice.
Okay.
The second one is Item 9M.
9M is "Consideration of an action on a request to purchase land located at 2525 Roosevelt Highway adjacent to the Dog Park."
I'm adding the language that "in the amount of $145,000 from TPD."
Oh, okay, that is not a removal, that's an amendment.
Yes.
So...
"In the amount of $145,000 from TPD." Okay, I'm removing... "In the regular business," I'm removing Item N, "Consideration of an action and agreement of the City of College Park on AMC commercial loyalty to provide professional real estate broker services." He's already done that, so I'm removing that.
Okay.
Item P, "Consideration of a request to approve an ordinance adjusting Council member salaries." This proposed ordinance establishes annual salaries of $56,000 for all council members.
It says 58.
I can't see them.
It says 58.
I'm removing Item P.
9P is removed? Okay.
I'm removing the next item that follows. I'm removing "Consideration of action to request a resolution for monthly in housing allowance," I'm moving 9Q.
Okay. Any other amendments, deletions, changes to the agenda? All right, so that's removing Items 9L, 9N, 9P, and 9Q, and then amending 9M in the amount of 145...to add in the amount of $145,000 from TPD.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Next agenda, Item 4, 4A, is workshop session minutes dated November 3, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Gay, were you in favor? All right, thank you. That is unanimous.
Item 4B, regular session minutes dated November 3, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you.
Next, Item Proclamations, Resolutions, Plaques, and Announcements. 5A, Consideration of an action on a request to approve a proclamation honoring the Brick Band. This item is sponsored by Councilman Roderick Gay.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda, Item 5B, Consideration of an action on a request to approve a proclamation honoring Kinder College Christian School. This item is sponsored by Councilman Roderick Gay.
Motion to add Councilmember Carn as co-sponsor.
Second.
Hold on. Councilmember Gay, your motion is to approve the proclamation and add that it's sponsored by Councilmember Carn as well?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Next item is Remarks of Citizens. First public comment, Leonard Masgo.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to come before you to give this presentation. Is it possible that I could give them a copy of this?
You should, clerk.
In that folder are documents that states who we are as an organization and what we do. Georgia Vet Fest is a nonprofit organization that provides services and resources for veterans and their families, right? We do that by hosting events of a patriotic nature to bring our families together in unity and camaraderie. With that being said, my presentation today is about an event that we're hosting here...
Sir, would you mind talking into the microphone just a little bit more? Thank you.
I will. Can you hear me better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's about an event that we're hosting here in the City of College Park, and it's going to be hosted at the Jazzy Jays Event Center on Old National, 5134 Old National, right here in College Park. This event will be our 90th and 91st event. It will be a toy giveaway. We have been hosting this event since 2011. We have served over 8,000 veteran families by doing so. With this event, it has a lot of amenities with it. We do entertainment, breakfast, toys, and we invite the whole public to come out to this event. What I'm here asking this body today, if you guys would consider accompanying us and assisting us in hosting this event. This event has a $20,000 budget, and that is to cover not only veterans, but this event is not just...it's also a community event where we invite the community out. Having said that, provided that whether or not you guys follow us on this, we want to offer 50 families from this community to come with needy kids for this event. All the information that you'll need, you have in front of you, you have our nonprofit status, you have our One Pager, you have our sponsorship, our sponsorship tiers, and if there's any other information or documents you need, I can provide them for you. I also spoke with the secretary earlier today that she can start gathering names to give to us and put in our database, so that we can accompany those families, those children, that may not have anything for this Christmas. And with you guys' support, I know that we can make this a good event, not only for veterans, but also for College Park as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Karen Jeremy.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing our organization to present to you today about the College Park Preservation and Conservancy. I'm here today to talk to you as the President of the College Park Historic Society. I really would like to encourage you to again support the efforts of the College Park Historic Society in creating an organizational body that will work with the city to make sure that we legislate ordinances to keep our historic landmarks historic, as well as to keep...as well as to keep us...I love it. Amen, brother, amen. And I encourage you to also make sure that we ensure that we work with our neighbors as they too look to become a part of the Historical Society. Thank you again for listening to me, and I also like to say, today I spoke with the mayor, and she apologized to me for the misinformation that was posted on Facebook. I appreciate you owning that and owning the fact that it was not factual what you said, and that today you're going to make that correction. I hold you to that, and I appreciate that. I'd like to also talk about a couple of things that keep coming into question. In 2019, I moved...I was living in California, Sacramento, California, working for Kilpatrick Townsend Law. And I made the decision...my husband didn't like California. He's a native of Haiti, and he said it was too far from Haiti. And so, being the doting wife that I am, we decided to come home to Georgia. I had a great friend of mine, the Lenzies, Novia and Mike Lindsey, and they said, "Check out College Park. We could have moved anywhere in the State of Georgia," because I've been very blessed and we had the income to move where we wanted to live. I chose College Park. I saw the potential of College Park. I saw that College Park was on the way to being great things, and I wanted to participate in that. I have done quite a few things in the city, because people keep asking. I'm of age to be considered a senior citizen, and I am planning the next part of my life. And so, I have become very active in College Park. I campaigned for my neighbors, I got to know my neighbors, and campaigned on two campaigns since I've been here in the five years that I've been here. I also have very much been active on Herschel Road. I got our...I created a community meeting where we actually...and Mario Malcolm is giving me his five minutes. Mario?
Three minutes. He doesn't have...
I mean, it's three minutes.
All right.
And so, I campaigned, and I...we talked with Mayor Pro Tem, we worked on the Brady Trail, we have talked about making Herschel Road, I've done a lot of research on it, and found out some amazing things, and that's how I got to the Historical Society, and have shared all of that information. I have volunteered at almost quite a few events. I'm excited about all that is happening, because I don't think Herschel Road is Ward 1, or Ward 2, or Ward 4. It's Herschel Road, and I am excited about all the great things that are happening on Herschel Road. It is like it is coming alive, and I like to think that I had a little bit to do with that. So, when I am questioned about my motives, it is because I call College Park home. It's where I live, it's where I play, it's where I take my meals, and it's also where I would like to work. I am not ashamed at all of asking to work with the city. I have a professional career that I am very proud of. Some have indeed said I have what they call a blue ribbon resume, and I don't run from that. I have been very, very fortunate to have opportunities that many only dream about. I've sat with presidents, I've sat with governors, I've sat with CEOs of Fortune 50 companies, I've sat with the president of the National American Red Cross. I've been a part...one of my assignments, my last assignment as Delta Airlines, was to manage the September 11th response on behalf of the company. I am very proud of those things. I've won the national...the World Sports Humanitarian Award for all the hard work that I've done. So, it is very insulting when you ask me what credentials do I have to be the person for the Conservancy. I think that it belittles me, I think that it is personal, and I think that we both need to rise above that. I came down here, and I had a lot to say, but I said, "I'm a lady. My grandmother raised a lady, and I'm not going to vibrate on a low level because someone else is." I'm always going to...I am going to continue to come back. Every time I have an idea, I'm going to approach, and I've approached everyone on ideas, I think, except for you, Ms. Motley Broome. But I will approach you too, because every time I have an idea, I'm coming. I'm coming back again and again and again and again, because this city deserves to be as great as it can be, and I want to be a part of that. That makes you uncomfortable, I don't care.
Thank you.
I'd like to greet you all tonight in the greetings of peace and understanding. My name is Larry Brady Evans. I reside at 2112 West Princeton Avenue, where I've resided there for over 50 years. And I'd just like to share a few concerns that I have of being a native of College Park, living here for the last 66 years. First, I do like to commend you, Roderick Gay, for the work that you've done over in Ward 4, of what we would call the lower hand of College Park, because all of them are the same as College Park. You did a great job there, and I must commend you. As an African-American city councilman here in College Park, to me, you've done more than those who've came before you. Not that they didn't do anything, but they didn't do what you have done. To the rest of the City Councils, Mr. Mill, I think you have uplifted the spirit of College Park as a chairman, as a citizen of College Park, and so forth. Joe, thank you for your dedication to work that you've done here in College Park. Ms. Arnold, thank you. You and... You and Jamil, y'all are rookies to the politician game compared to the other three. Bianca, you've been straight up to the best of your ability and I'd like to commend you. But when I say you guys are rookies, these are vets. They are politicians. And for me, no disrespect to the politicians. I would never be a politician because history had taught me that politicians are some of the world's greatest liars. So, no disrespect to you and that's the field that you all have chosen. But I pray that you all come together and do the best that you can do. And to you, ma'am, well, to you, sir, thank you for your dedicated work here in College Park. And I thank all of you all. And for the citizens of College Park, I'd like to thank the citizens on rugby for the Halloween gifts they open their doors to the children of College Park. And that was beautiful. And as we go into the holiday season, let us go with love.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll be back.
Bianca Motley Broome.
The gavel, please. Mayor, pass the gavel. Please pass the gavel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to talk tonight about a random, but not that random statute that is in the Georgia code. It is OCGA 36-35-4. We've dealt with this before since we had issues about the compensation of council members when it was tied to the CPI. And we discovered several years ago that wasn't legal. So, we rolled back those salaries. During that time, we had extensive discussions about what we could and what we could not do in regard to salaries. We know better. We know that at 8:45 on a Sunday night, we cannot add things to the agenda that have not since been pulled, but they should have been prepared in the first place. We all know better. We all know that 36-35-4 says that any increase of a salary for a municipal body shall not be effective until after the taking of office of those elected at the next regular municipal election, which is held immediately following the date on which the action to increase the compensation was taken. So, even if this body had considered raising their salaries by over 130% tonight, that would not have occurred until January 1st, 2028. If this body had considered a $2,000 housing allowance or a $750 a month vehicle allowance for my colleagues, mayor was excluded from that and I'm fine with it. That action could not have taken place at this time because subsection B of the statute says that you can't take action on salaries between qualifying and the time that the new council's sworn in, which would be January 1st for us. It also says that we have to post it for three weeks in a row. None of the criteria was met, but at 8:45 on Sunday night, we got multiple emails from our clerk, again changing our agenda in a way that seeks to distract and divert because still, the math ain't mathin'. Still, I'm hopeful we'll hear an update in the city manager's report about the status of the gift cards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Bogner.
Joanne Hubert.
May I please have the gavel back?
I'm chairing the meeting and I will give it to you once a motion is made to return the gavel to you.
Ms. Hubert, please hold for one moment because I am back as chair of this meeting.
The mayor has relinquished herself as a chair. She will receive the chair again upon, I am now the chair of this meeting. And the mayor will get the chair back upon a motion to receive the chairmanship again. So, you can have a seat. Okay, Ms. Hubert, go ahead.
Ms. Hubert, I'm the chair of this meeting. I'm back as the chair.
City attorney, according to Roberts Rules of Order, the mayor has relinquished her...
And I'm back.
...the chair. She has voluntarily relinquished the chair. And as I stand as the chair of the meeting and when I decide as a chair, just as she decided to not allow the clerk to read into record something, as I'm chairing this meeting, when I decide to take a motion to return the chairmanship to the mayor, I will do so. And now, if we would proceed with public comments.
Is there a motion to return the presiding officer as the chair of the meeting?
Ms. Motley Broome, you're out of order. You cannot take a motion. And I would last at this time that we would continue with our public comments. Thank you very much. Ms. Bogner or Ms. Janine?
Everything okay, ma'am?
No, everything's not okay.
You ladies want to settle that?
No, it's settled. We're just going to continue with the meeting and we're going to follow proper parliamentary protocol.
And as the presiding officer of this meeting, I'm asking the Mayor Pro Tem to return the gavel and relinquish chairing because the presiding officer has returned. If you want to make an issue of this, we can. Return the gavel, please.
I've already spoken and at this time, the Mayor Pro Tem is chairing the meeting because the chair voluntarily, the person who was serving as the chair voluntarily relinquished the chair. If we can continue with the meeting at this time, we're asking Ms. Janine, please go on with your comments.
Mr. Denmark? As the presiding officer of this meeting, I have returned from my public comments. I have the right, like any other resident, to speak. I am the presiding officer of this meeting. I would ask that as a parliamentarian, that you instruct the Mayor Pro Tem to return the gavel.
I certainly don't have the ability to instruct the Mayor Pro Tem. What I will say is that when you relinquish the gavel, there has to be a process for the gavel to be returned. The Mayor Pro Tem is presiding over the meeting. She has made a determination that the gavel will be relinquished upon a proper motion. The full body can overrule that determination if they feel that that determination is not consistent with parliamentary procedure.
I would like for us to continue at this time with public comment. Ms. Herbert, would you please go on?
I would be glad to, but I don't want to disrespect the mayor.
Well, that's already happened.
You're not disrespecting anyone. Go ahead. The mayor is not following proper protocol. I will allow her to resume the meeting when I ask for a motion. Okay, please go on.
Okay. Based on what Mr. Denmark said, I'm not supposed to proceed. Could I recommend you...
Go right ahead, Ms. Hubert.
No, he did not tell you not to proceed.
Ms. Hubert, go right ahead.
He did not say that to you. You can go ahead. Please go ahead with your comments.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I really was standing up here to speak about the absorbent amount of funds when I was reading on Speak Up College Park today. And I was appalled. I've never seen raises jumping up 100% and you're doing in the same position? Is there an additional heavy load? Is there something additional that you all are dealing with to substantiate such an exorbitant amount in a raise? Not only that, when you look at the median household income in here and I could not believe how much money you guys have been spending on other things. We just had a government shutdown. I thought about everything that some of these people over here could use those funds for. You want a 100% raise, allowance for a vehicle, something to do about supplementing, something for housing. But you all are not substantiating why there is a need for that. Maybe contribute to it, but those were absorbent amounts. I could not believe it, especially when you look at the percentage of people that income in College Park are below $40,000. When you look at the people in College Park that are on government assistance, why do you all need a car? I've seen all of y'all vehicles where I've seen the mayor walk a lot. But you got beautiful, very expensive vehicles, very expensive depreciating assets. That's what they do. So, unless you pull it off of the parking lot, it's depreciating. So, I mean, can you all substantiate what has changed in your lifetime, in your lifestyle, or in your duties to substantiate such an enormous increase? I mean, it's enormous. It's enormous. And then, when I look at the budget in College Park, really, what are you all doing with all that money? How are you all substantiating those raises? 100% what has happened in College Park in the last five years? Is your workload that heavy? That's very disappointing. This is very disappointing. And you know, my friends often get on me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Ms. Herbert. And at this time, I'd like to take a motion to return the chair to the mayor.
Motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. And at this time, I return the gavel to Ms. Motley Broome.
That's Mayor Motley Broome. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Next public comment, Eleanor Cornelius. Beulah Lindsey.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Well...
Good evening.
This is my, I think, my first time ever coming before this council. I believe it might have been once and I didn't get an opportunity to talk because I think that at the time, what I was talking about was going to be on the agenda a little later. And the mayor brought that to my attention and she told me I couldn't talk. But anyway, we talked about it later. It's never a dull moment, I must say. You see that? That's what I come before this council or not. I don't hardly come to council meetings anymore because it just seems like it's never a dull moment. But having said that, I came, I put my name on the list to speak because of the same thing Ms. Hubbard was addressing. However, it has been addressed and I appreciate Mr. Gay for making that recommendation to delete. That's O, P, and Q. And I especially appreciate the mayor for the clarification with respect to that, that it's illegal for us to do that at this time. And if that is correct, and I'm assuming that it is, then I appreciate your clarifying that as well. Thank you for all that you do and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Eberhart.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city manager, and administration. I initially did not plan to comment before the council. I simply came tonight to gain more information on the proposed landscaping initiative and the proposed historical preservation and conservation group. I too am a history buff. As I'm a graduate of Georgia State University with a minor in history and I want to comment on the proposed historic conservancy project. Upon hearing the presentation tonight, I loved the concept of establishing a centralized conservatory group that traces the history of our region from its origin to its present state. It is a great concept to be able to separate our history into phases from our Native American roots to the beginning of our country, state, and city through Civil War, Reconstruction, the turn of the century, to our present time that reflects the impact and contributions that numerous cultures have made in our area to enable it to evolve into the dynamic city that it has become. As a native son of College Park and historic one square mile, I am excited about having all elements of historical reference under one roof and a central unit developed to ensure that this history will be properly preserved and maintained for future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all I have for in-person public comment.
Okay. If anyone else who didn't sign up wishes to speak, they can do so at this time.
Good evening, Elizabeth Lester. I live on Cambridge.
Good evening.
There's a lot of items I would love to talk about, but obviously limited. Excuse me, limited time. I think in particular, one item I would like to point out is on the proposed change to public comment. I'm concerned about the prohibition on personal attacks against elected officials. While I don't think they should be a personal attack, I think that may want to be rephrased because it could be construed that if you criticize an elected official and matters that they're bringing before, I wouldn't want that to be something that would be found to be in violation of the public comments. And I believe that that could interfere with the citizens' First Amendment rights to speak. So, I'm particularly concerned about that. I also am very concerned about some of the proposals regarding Councilwoman Arnold's suggestion to basically prepay money that is then going to be repaid from the 2027 Splasht funds for Clayton County. And I think that that leaves a lot of questions as to whether that's the right thing, if it's something that's not going to be started until 2027 in the first place. I have some concerns about the financial appropriateness of that, I guess I could say. And then, as for the historical conservancy, I think in theory, I'm not necessarily against it. I'm concerned about the fact that you have a $250,000 budget proposed for an organization that was just created. There's no board members, there's no oversight, there's no actual budget. So, how do we know how much money they're actually going to need to do the work they're doing? And I think that there's also a question is how does that intersect with the current owners of these historical sites, which is currently BIDA in many cases? And so, is it the Historical Society going to be telling BIDA what to do with the property? I think there's a lot of questions that remain to be seen and I think it's something that would be better to have hashed out in workshop rather than voted on tonight before it's actually been thought through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
If anyone else wishes to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I know all of you.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you state your name?
My name is Zeron Pledger. 4350 Janus Drive. I know all of you very well, with the exception of Councilwoman Tracy Arnold. Welcome. I just have to ask you guys, I've been coming up here for years with the same request when I speak to you individually and collectively. Let's just have civility, guys. Let's just have respect for one another. We need to establish a certain level of dignity, not only within the city of College Park, but outside of College Park. At a certain point, you get tired of the phone calls coming to your phone and people saying, "What's going on with you guys in the city of College Park?" Why are we continuing to disrespect one another? I don't know if there's a conversation that needs to be held about how we can establish a certain level of dignity towards one another, but that's where it all begins. And we have to figure out a way to do that, to move forward, to move the city forward, because it starts at the top. And I'm not really understanding, as we sit and we look at these council meetings, I've gotten to a point, I'm like Sister Lindsay, I've gotten to a point to where I just kind of stopped coming to the meetings because it's a continuous thing. It's a continuous theme. But I just had to say that I couldn't sit on that any longer. Like I said, I've had these conversations with certain individuals one-on-one in the past and figured I would come and say it again in 2025 and we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishes to speak? All right. We'll move to emails.
Pardon the delay. First public comment is from Webster Wallace to the Honorable Members of the College Park City Council. My name is Webster Wallace and I'm writing today to urge council to take several meaningful steps that will further the progress, vision and economic vitality of our city. Full support for the College Park Botanical Gardens. First and foremost, I am requesting the council's continued and equivocal support for the College Park Botanical Gardens and all efforts to grow, expand and advance this transformative project. The Botanical Gardens represent one of the most promising community-centered amenities in our city, one that promotes education, environmental stewardship, recreation, civic pride. I encourage the council to stand firmly behind Councilman Gay's leadership on this initiative and ensure it receives the attention, resources and advocacy it deserves. We are watching you councilmen do this right and do right by the people and you will need us before it is all over. Land swap for the old Target property on Old National Highway. Secondly, I request that the council begin formal discussions regarding a land swap via deannexation and annexation for the old Target property off Old National Highway. The strategic step would open the door for a major redevelopment that brings the true mixed-use district to life, one that can anchor Old National's long-awaited economic revival. This site has scale, visibility and market potential to meaningfully shift the economic direction of our corridor and this action would allow College Park to be the city that shapes that future rather than watches from the sidelines. Aggressive recruitment of at-large commercial vendors for Six West. Third, I strongly encourage the council to broaden and intensify its recruitment of at-large commercial vendors for the Six West development. Six West is one of the most valuable undeveloped properties in the southeastern United States and its success depends on casting a wide net nationally and internationally to attract premier tenants. This is the moment to lean in, strengthen outreach and bring in the types of businesses that match the vision and the scale the community has been promised. Regarding concerns or questions from Ward One residents. Lastly, if any of the mayor's friends or supporters from Ward One would like a direct face-to-face conversation to address concerns, questions or misconceptions, I am more than willing to meet. I encourage the mayor to coordinate this meeting promptly with her husband and it can take place as early as this Friday. Transparency and open dialogue remain essential and I will always stand ready to engage respectfully and directly. Thank you for your time, commitment and continued service to the residents of College Park. I trust that council will give these matters the thoughtful consideration they deserve and I look forward to seeing our city continue to grow with intention, innovation and unity. Next public comment from Cole Shambless. Dear Council and Mayor, I write in today, unequivocal opposition to the proposed establishment of allowances that would grant each council member a $2,000 monthly housing allowance. This proposal is not only fiscally irresponsible, it is fundamentally illogically illogical and deeply disrespectful to the taxpayers of College Park. Let's be honest, no one was forced to run for office. Each elected official affirmed residency in College Park as part of the qualifying for their seat. That alone makes the concept of a housing allowance not just unnecessary, but absurd. Why would taxpayers subsidize housing for individuals who already attested under oath that they live in the city? Why would residents be expected to pay a council member's rent, utilities, mortgage or cost of living when residency was a requirement from the moment they chose to appear on the ballot? We, the residents of College Park, are not opposed to fair compensation. In fact, we strongly support a measured reasonable salary increase in the range of $10,000 to $20,000, reflecting the real responsibilities and time commitments of governing. We also support a vehicle allowance that ensures our officials can represent the city professionally and effectively when necessary. But we do not support and will not tolerate as a creation of a financial package that turns public service into personal benefits program. Salary plus travel plus housing plus utilities plus vehicle allowances? That is not government. That is government-funded lifestyle inflation and it insults every resident who pays taxes, every small business struggling to stay open and every city employee who works tirelessly without access to these perks. Let's be clear, a $2,000 per month housing allowance is not about public service. It is not about community needs. It is not about strengthening the city. It is about padding pockets plain and simple. College Park deserves integrity, transparency and fiscal responsibility, not a resolution designed to quietly enrich elected officials under the guise of compensation structure. If the council wishes to build trust and demonstrate leadership, then align compensation with service, not personal comfort. Respectfully but forcefully, the residents of College Park are watching, paying attention and absolutely rejecting this proposal. Next comment is from Keith Lyme. Please be fiscally responsible with funds in these uncertain times. I urge you not to approve raises for council nor the car allowance for council and mayor. Serving, yes, serving on council should never be compensated as a full-time job. Many of your constituents make well under the current compensation for council. How can you justify giving yourselves raises? This is not a good look. If you need money, resign from council and get a job. I am very disappointed two vendors on the city payroll use citizens' public comment time and additional time gifted my others to give updates when they could have easily been added to the agenda, discussed in executive session or by email directly to mayor, council and city manager. This is yet another blatant example of silencing citizens' voices.
Is that six minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Next item, public hearing, 7A, public hearing and action on a request to approve a resolution for a conditional height permit at 3698 East Main Street. And resolution? This item is requested by Lenise Lyons, city planner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Ms. Lyons.
Yes, this is a conditional heights permit for a property at 3698 East Main Street. It's for a mixed-use development. They are requesting a height permit to exceed the maximum height of a structure from 35 feet to allow structures up to 53 feet. This is in our transit-oriented development district, right at East Main Street and Princeton Avenue. It's currently an undeveloped lot and they are proposing to construct several, seven residential units with approximately 3,786 square feet of retail or commercial space. They have, this application has been to the planning commission and they have recommended approval of the conditional height permit. The applicant has also applied for, has made application to the FAA for the height increase and they have received feedback from them and that was included in your packet. The application also requires three variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals for sidewalks and setbacks. And they went to the November 10th Board of Zoning Appeals hearing and were approved there for those variances. So this is their final step to start their plan to redevelop that site. And this is from the Tabanuko Group LLC and I believe we have a representative here to speak on behalf of this application.
Okay. The representative would like to speak?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council as well. Thank you for your time.
Could you introduce yourselves?
Yes, I'm Steve Bernard and this is Ms. Eva and we are from the Tabanuko Group. We have our other members here of our group. We are an investment group and we are very honored and very excited to do this project here in the city of College Park. This project is a mixed-use townhome where at the bottom of the townhome, it's going to be a commercial space and then above it, the residents. The good thing about this product is that the owner of the townhome is also the owner of the commercial space. And the idea behind this product is to increase economic development because the dollar will stay in your community longer because the owner of the business lives in your community. You guys have the layout of the pictures of these townhomes. We're just super excited about it. It's in the Todd District, so we're very excited. The design of it was to keep in line with what you already have on Main Street to encourage commercial and residential activities.
He said it all, but I just wanted to add, yes, this is something to give small business owners an opportunity to be able to own and also have a place where they can have their business. Typically, small business owners, they struggle with getting a place to lease and also paying a mortgage at the same time. This gives them an opportunity to have one mortgage and have both as well as take advantage of great incentives with loans. They can get an SBA loan, FHA, VHA. So the possibilities are endless. So, thank you.
All right. Well, at this time, I will declare the public hearing open and so if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this conditional height permit, they can do so at this time. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Any discussion? Hearing now will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Agenda item 7B, public hearing for 2025 College Park redevelopment plan. This item is requested by city attorney Winston Denmark.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. As you know, on November the 3rd, this council approved the resolution creating the College Park Redevelopment Agency. In accordance with state law, we were obligated to have a public hearing on the redevelopment plan, which was properly noticed and advertised. And so now we are conducting that public hearing on the redevelopment plan, which sets forth the redevelopment goals for the designated redevelopment area. In the November 3rd resolution attached there too was the map designating the three redevelopment areas, being the Botanical Garden, the Six West Development and the Old National Corridor. And so this redevelopment plan delineates the redevelopment plans and priorities in the redevelopment area. And in accordance with state law, we have a public hearing this evening on the plan.
All right. This time I'll declare the public hearing open. If anyone wishes to speak on the redevelopment plan, they can do so at this time.
So.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
This is Elizabeth Lester again. Maybe I missed something, but I don't think I did. But it seems really confusing that you are granting a redevelopment agency authority over Six West when most of Six West is owned by BIDA. And so it's not clear to the public, the citizens, as far as who is going to have authority over redeveloping the property at Six West. Is it going to be BIDA? Is it going to be this redevelopment agency? Who are people supposed to approach? Is an economic development director supposed to defer to the redevelopment agency? Are they supposed to defer to BIDA? I don't think any of this has been explained to the public, which means I don't think any developers are going to understand it and I think it is actually going to really hurt the city and cause a lot of confusion. And so if this body chooses to move forward with this, I think it is very important that there be very clear lines of responsibility as far as who is responsible for what. What is BIDA responsible for? What is the redevelopment agency responsible for? And if they are the same thing, then there needs to be some sort of process for resolving a conflict of opinions between the two. There really is not any clarity there and so I think I don't see how this can be beneficial to the city. And it worries me a great deal, given the promises that have been made about Six West for years, not to mention the cost if you have to all of a sudden transfer all of that property from BIDA to the redevelopment agency or the city or whomever is going to control it. So it just seems like some more thought needs to be put into this. It hasn't been discussed again in workshop. It was just thrown up there. It was voted on. Once again, things not being thought through.
Thank you. If anyone else wishes to speak on this matter? All right. At this time, the public hearing is closed.
Item 8A, consideration of an action on a request to approve the proposed collaboration with Trees Atlanta to implement a comprehensive tree planting and care plan for Main Street and East Main Street. This partnership will enhance the urban canopy, improve environmental quality and support long-term beautification and sustainability goals for the city. This is a donation and no cost to the city, sponsored by Mayor Protem Jamelle McKenzie. 8B, consideration of an action on a request to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of College Park, Georgia and Faith Walkers Community Church, Inc. for emergency support services. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Tracy Arnold. Item 8C, consideration of an action on a request to approve a $100,000 payment to Faith Walkers Community Church for the support of community wraparound services for the city of College Park or three constituents. This is a budgeted item, non-capital initiatives budget. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Tracy Arnold. 8D, consideration of an action on a request to authorize emergency repairs and replacement of flooring and paint in the fire administrative offices utilizing pointers painting LLC in the amount of $23,710 in accordance with the city's emergency procurement policy. This request is due to the flooding event at the public safety complex. These repairs are budgeted in FY 2026 from R&amp;M Building Fire. This request is being expedited to repair the damages in fire administration. This will impact Ward One. Item 8E, consideration of an action on a request to approve the use of the city's exception policy to authorize the emergency procurement and installation of digital cable and fiber optic infrastructure at the arena. This action will ensure uninterrupted connectivity and support critical operations at the facility. The cost is $141,436 to repair. This item is requested by Yanis Barner, Executive Director, GICC Arena and Golf Course. This is a budgeted item, fund other equipment replacement fiscal year 2026. replacement fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. This will service Ward Two. Item eight F, consideration of an action on a request to approve the cooperative purchasing agreement with Licti Commercial Construction, Inc., in the amount of sixty thousand dollars utilizing Sourcewell Contract. This agreement will allow the city to engage a vendor for general contracting services at the General Georgia International Convention Center in accordance with procurement policies and cooperative purchasing guidelines. This is a budgeted item. This item is being requested by Yanis Barner, Director of GICC Funds, Ground, FY twenty-twenty-six. Item eight G, consideration of an action on a request for approval of cooperative purchase agreement with Motorola, Inc., in the amount of ninety-two thousand five hundred one dollars and forty-five cents, which is under contract. This approval will authorize the city to proceed with the acquisition of critical communications equipment and services through a competitively solicited and pre-negotiated cooperative contract. This item is being requested by Chief of Police Connie Rogers. This is a budgeted item fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six contractual services. This will service all wards. Item eight H, motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash XX for the City of College Park's supervised application for the Fulton County Community Development Block Grant for the three-year funding grant application for the park and facility improvement. This item is being requested by Lance Terry, Interim Director of Recreation and Cultural Arts. This will service all wards. Item eight I, consideration of an action on a request to approve a professional services agreement with Loveloom Media Group in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars for the production of a College Park Train Depot Documentary. The contract will span a six-month term during which the vendor will develop a comprehensive and professionally-produced documentary that captures the historical significance, current revitalization efforts, and future vision for the train depot. This is a budgeted item, Fund Ward One, Community Enhancement, Non-Capital Funds.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine A, for regular business, consideration of an action on a request to approve two-stop signs at Howard Drive and Hawthorne Avenue. This area is of Princeton Village. This is a request from Chief of Police Connie Rogers. This will service Ward Three. This is not a budgeted item, and there will be no cost for the police department.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
And nine B, consideration of an action on a request to approve two-stop signs at Godby Road and Godby Place. This area is near the Discount Mall. This is a request from Chief of Police Connie Rogers. This will service Ward Two. This is not a budgeted item, and there will be no cost for the police department.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item nine C, consideration of an action on a special event from the Atlanta Track Club to hold the Jerome Scale South Side Five Mile on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-six with the College Park Marta Station from five-thirty a.m. to eleven a.m. This request is from Queenie Brown Deputy City Clerk. This event will be held throughout the city.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item ninety, consideration of an action on a request to approve seven invoices from Colliers International, South Carolina, Inc., from July through October, totaling eight hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars. This is a budgeted item.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold, can you make sure your microphone is...
I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the delay on the invoices, why we have so many at one time.
Madam City Manager?
Yes, the delay was based on the explanation coming from the financial advisor at the last meeting. They wanted to go through the actual amendments. There are several amendments to the agreement, and we wanted to understand the actual payment plan.
Did he give us more information on whether or not we were making money off of this property?
Yes, he'll bring that forward on the next meeting. He did an assessment of the building according to the lease and the amount we're paying per square footage or receiving per square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item nine E, consideration of an action on a request to approve the proposed twenty-twenty-six mayor and council meeting schedule. This request is from Kelly Bogner, City Clerk. This will have a citywide impact.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine F, consideration of an action on a request to approve a working twenty-twenty-six city of College Park citywide events, festivals, and programming. This item is being requested by Tonia LaPlanch, Athletic Coordinator, City Center Supervisor, and Queenie Brown Deputy City Clerk.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion?
Yes.
I wanted to add...
Councilmember Gay?
I wanted to add to the item, the senior concert with the senior social.
It's on there.
No, not the concert, just social.
So?
Social is what they have. The concert is what we have.
Okay.
Senior concert.
Councilmember Carr?
We did speak in the workshop about a couple of annual events that we weren't going to add, but established dates. So I just wanted to make sure that was notated in the motion.
Can you read them, Councilman Carr, so you can put them in the record?
All right. The Boys to Men Summit, the Holiday Business in College Park, and the annual Helping Hands Holiday Christmas Dinner and Toy Event.
Councilmember Arnold?
And I also wanted to add the Senior Health Fair, which is March twenty-first.
Any further discussion?
Do you have all the dates? Does the clerk have all the dates?
My dates are to be determined, but we're going to establish those solid dates annually.
Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, no, I do not have all the dates at this time.
Madam Clerk, can you follow up with members of the governing body in regard to those dates after this?
Of course.
All right. Is that possible?
Oh, yes, definitely. It'll be myself or Queenie. We will get with the...
All right.
Mayor.
Not trying to instruct you, just asking if it's a possibility.
Oh, yes, it's definitely possible.
All right.
I would, Madam Mayor, do I have a quick question? Councilman Gay, on your event, was that a senior social?
Senior concert.
Senior concert, okay. Thank you, sir.
That's a separate from senior social.
Okay.
It's the same. It's February fourteenth, Valentine.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Valentine on fourteenth?
Mm-hmm.
February fourteenth.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine G, consideration of an action on a request to adopt a resolution allocating five hundred thousand from the Ward Three Capital Initiative Fund for land preparation activities supporting the future city incubator and accelerator center, authorization for SPOS advanced funding and reimbursement, GL account one hundred dash eleven dash three-three-zero-zero advances to other funds. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Tracy Arnold.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine H, consideration of an action on a request to adopt a resolution allocating three hundred fifty thousand dollars for Dog Park Development and authorization for SPOS advanced funding and reimbursement, GL account number one hundred dash eleven dash three-three-zero-zero advances to other funds. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Tracy Arnold.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine I, consideration of an action on a request to approve a resolution supporting the establishment of the CP Historical Preservation Conservancy and Authorization Financial Partnership. This item is sponsored by Mayor Pro Tem Jamelle McKenzie.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine J, consideration of action on a request to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of College Park and CP Historical Preservation Conservancy. This item is sponsored by Mayor Pro Tem Jamelle McKenzie.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine K, consideration of an action on a request to approve a resolution installment sale agreement for the lease purchase of four fire apparatus units, one ladder truck, one tiller truck, one pumper engine, and one Skeeter parking deck truck. This item was approved at the November third, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting. This item is being requested by Fire Chief Sterling Jones. These purchases will impact all wards.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine L was removed from the agenda.
Nine L has been removed. We're on to a nine M.
Nine M, consideration of an action on a request to purchase land located at twenty-twenty-five Roosevelt Highway adjacent to the Dog Park in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand dollars from TPD funds. This item is sponsored by Councilman Roderick Gay.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item nine N, removed from the agenda. Nine O, consideration of an action on a request to approve a resolution regarding City of College Park public comment policy. This item is sponsored by City Attorney Winston Denmark.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Next two items removed from the agenda. That concludes regular business. City Attorney's Report.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, beyond my written report that was delivered to the mayor and council, I have no further report.
Item eleven, City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I first would like to thank my staff for their hard work. I also wanted to give a special thanks to our admin staff that do the initial requests for requisitions. We had a lunch and learn, and I wanted to tell them publicly, great job. And the written City Manager Report has been sent to you. Thank you.
Item twelve, Report of Mayor and Council.
So earlier this month, I had the opportunity to attend the MEAG Power Mayor Summit, which is always an informative opportunity. We talked a lot about data centers, a lot about data centers, and their impact, not only on the state, but the entire country in terms of electric consumption and the other needs of data centers, and how we manage that growth because the demand is still increasing. But there's a lot of concerns about when does this peak end and how we move forward to plan properly and ensure that our residents and our businesses that are already here have the power that they need, the reliable public power that they need to get their day-to-day needs done. And so I want to take an opportunity to thank our College Park Power staff. I see Mr. Spivey in the back there, and thank you and the entire team for everything that you do. We heard a lot about what the current political climate means for public power and how we make our voices heard in Washington, DC as well, because it's all shifting, it's all changing. But there are a lot of things to consider. And I think we heard a little bit about it, but we're headed to Salt Lake City for the National League of Cities Conference. I'm honored to serve on the Board of Directors of NLC, and also as the president of the Georgia Municipal Association, will be welcoming all of the folks who are Georgia representatives, municipal representatives in Salt Lake City, and looking forward to bringing back best practices. I also serve as the board liaison to the Small Cities Council. So that is for cities that are fifty thousand and below. And we always have great robust discussions about how we can improve things like access to federal funding and housing insecurity in communities. Those are big topics that we have a lot of conversations about. I certainly want to remind everybody about this Saturday, November twenty-second, at ten a.m., we are partnering with MegaFaith again for the amazingly successful and incredible Gas on God giveaway at the Chevron on Old National Highway. Proud to partner with MegaFaith, Councilmember Arnold, and the College Park Police are going to be, I mean, absolutely integral to the entire thing for making it happen and made things go very smoothly in conjunction with the Fulton County Sheriff's Office as well. So I want to thank everyone in advance for coming together for this amazing event that really just showcases the heart and the spirit of our community. My last one-on-one is on Tuesday, December second, last one of twenty-twenty-five, then we'll roll into twenty-twenty-six. So if you'd like to schedule an opportunity for us to sit down, please go to mayorvianca.com, and we can set up a time. Would love to chat with you. And my final town hall of the year will be on Wednesday, December seventeenth at six-thirty. And I am talking about, we talked a little bit about it in August, the concept of participatory budgeting, but we're going to talk a lot more about it and go in depth on that to hear what you want to do with your money. Not a hard concept. I think that it's going to be a robust discussion, and I am looking forward to beginning the conversation with you. And I didn't quite finish everything that I was talking about in regard to OCGA thirty-six dash thirty-five dash four. But the point I was trying to make was that we already knew we couldn't do this. We're going to have to pay fees for these ordinances and these resolutions that were on our agenda to be drafted. But we already knew we couldn't do this. We just wasted money. We just wasted taxpayer money on something that we could not do in the first place at this time, and it doesn't make any sense. We knew what these salaries were when we signed up for it. We are amongst the highest-paid elected officials per capita in this state. The mayor of Sandy Springs, with a population of over a hundred thousand people and a billion-dollar budget, makes about forty-five thousand dollars a year. We do it because of the service. We do it for the opportunity to make our communities better. We don't need a housing allowance. We don't need a vehicle allowance. Well, you know what? Let me just speak for myself. Don't need a housing allowance. I don't need a vehicle allowance. I don't need a raise from this job. This is a part-time job. We knew that when we signed up. And we've got the opportunity to make a great impact in this city and do it without these distractions and focus on the things that matter, like your money. Because I am excited to engage in the audit process. Our audit is due December thirty-first of this year. I'm concerned that we may not hit that deadline. We haven't had any substantive conversations about it. But I'm hopeful that we'll get there because our audit for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four that was due December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four didn't come till nearly mid-year this year. We can do better. We should do better. I have some concerns about how we were spending money in FY twenty-five, and I am looking forward to talking to auditors about some of those concerns because it's fairly typical for auditors to reach out to the governing body to ask if there have been any irregularities. And I think there have been some. And I think there are things that we can address and things that we can clean up. But if we don't address those problems, then we're never going to get any further ahead. So I'm looking forward to that audit process and looking forward to engaging with the auditors as they work on FY twenty-five. And lastly, yet again, haven't heard an update on those gift cards. It's really important, and it's not going away. At the Ward Four Community Citywide Festival, all of the vendors gave gift cards, and they are city property. We need an accounting of... We need an accounting of them. I'll keep on asking because it's your money. That's all I've got. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. Before Kelly plays the video while she's getting the sound, I am, this has just been an amazing year, everyone. Would you believe that we are just one meeting away from the last meeting of this year? And I look back on these past 11 months and we've accomplished some phenomenal things. I just want to say, as she gets ready to play the video, love you all. I love this city. I am totally excited about this moment and where we're going. So just as we get ready to go into, because next time we see you, we would have had Thanksgiving, right? So just want to ask everybody, because it's not in my video, be safe over this holiday season and think about somebody that's in need. I'm looking at my sister Beulah and she's my inspiration because she saw family that was in need and she stepped up to the plate. And this is the time of year, you know, a lot of times we're thinking about the things that we want for ourselves, but consider someone else. They may have a need, they just may need you to give them a phone call and say, hey, just thinking about you. You know, what you doing this weekend? I'm making a sweet potato pie. You want some? Just take this time. I just want to encourage everybody, I want to admonish you just to do something different, do something special for someone else, but also take care of yourself. I love you and I care, and this is on my report for this week.
Hi, my name is Ayesha Randall and this is my husband, Henry Randall. We're with DeMarco's Gifts, and today we're not only just giving back household items and toys, but we're also giving away some gift cards for different families. $200 a piece.
This is Mayor Pro Tim Jamelle McKenzie with my November 17th report. It has been a phenomenal two weeks of giving back and serving our community. As many of you are aware, we had been in the midst of the government shutdown and the City of College Park really came to the aid of our citizens in a powerful way. We began the two-week period with our Community Thrive Give Back, and I want to thank all the organizations that came together, Food in the City, JP Agency, DeMarco's Gifts, Tamika Raymond, Maisha Simone, Apostle McGowan, Pia Hopkins, DJ Primo, and then we had Favor House that did an amazing give back and a few give backs, in fact, over the past few weeks, and my husband was able to volunteer along with them and Ignite and to give back to our community. It has been a wonderful outreach, and then our city gave turkeys to our employees. And last week Fulton County came out with their mobile pantry unit and assisted us.
This is important to the community because, one, we want the community to know that we care. I think that's one of the most important things. But also we want the community to know that we're here for them. And anything that we can do as a municipal government, county government, as leadership, we are going to do to make sure that the needs of our citizens are taken care of. These are tough times right now, and what else should government stand for but that buffer, that means to connect people to the services that they need.
As the proud wife of a Air Force veteran, it was wonderful to be able to honor the veterans, our local veterans here in the City of College Park. We even had Operation Green Light on our City Hall lawn.
For what? Bill? Bill, right, Bill.
Who say, can you see? Our College Park youth leaders are on the move. They just completed their first quarter of our Youth Civic Advisory Board under the leadership of none other than veteran educator and dean Eleanor Cornelius Willis. And at this last session, we held our elections for Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Treasurer, Parliamentarian. We had a very interesting experience because we ended up going into a runoff election, which will be held at our next session at the end of this month. But overall, we have a fantastic group of young people who are really not just the leaders of tomorrow, they're leaders today. On Thursday, November 13th, our Wise and Well held their community kickoff in Ward One in the Keith James Auditorium. This program is designed to connect our seniors to resources, food, you name it, anything that can help them to live wise and to live well. And I'm super duper happy to have them here in College Park. Ward One updates and announcements. Last week, City Manager Lindell Miller and staff in Ward One leaders met on Main Street to continue, to discuss the ways that we plan to update and upgrade our Main Street. Keep watching us, we've got great things to come. Wednesday, November 19th, we'll be holding our second session for our College Park Love Feast, Love and Reverence in a Model Ward. Please come out and join us. Save the date. We will be holding our annual holiday give back at the Gateway Arena on December 8th, and then on December 13th, we'll be holding our Jingle and Mingle on Main Street. It's going to be a fantastic winter fest, and we'd love to see you there. This is Mayor Pro Tim Jamelle McKenzie concluding my November 17th report. We're building College Park better every day.
Councilmember Carr?
All right, thank you. Mayor, City Clerk, at this point, I am making the motion to terminate the contract for Lindell Miller and to appoint Mr. Michael Hicks as our interim City Manager effective immediately.
Second.
That's not on the agenda.
Mr. Demarc?
Doesn't necessarily have to be a, if he wants to make the motion.
All right. Makes the motion. Councilmember Arnold is seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So that is Councilmembers McKenzie, Carr, and Arnold in favor. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Councilmember Gay is opposed, the motion passes. Your report?
Thank you, Mayor. This upcoming city audit is a top priority, I believe. But additionally, I do believe that a lot of what has been going on regarding our conduct, regarding the management of this city, is in my opinion unsustainable and unacceptable. Ladies and gentlemen, as a governing body, I charge us all to commit to right this ship and to continue to move forward in decency, in transparency, and in order. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Arnold?
Thank you. Over, excuse me, over the past two weeks, I had the privilege, or have had the privilege of engaging in a series of meaningful and energizing experiences that reflect the spirit and leadership of the community in Clayton County. I began by participating in Leadership Clayton, Leadership Clayton Orientation, where I connected with fellow leaders who are equally passionate about shaping the future of our county, actually our city in that area. Excuse me for just a minute. It was inspiring to share ideas and build relationships that will strengthen our collective impact in the City of College Park in that area. I also celebrated the exciting kickoff for the College Park Sonic Swarm, our new drone soccer team. The team members showed great enthusiasm as they voted on their name and logo and proudly earned their FAA Trust certifications, which is a major step in youth innovation and STEM engagement. In the heart of the community, I hosted a dinner and movie with the wonderful seniors there at Princeton Courts. We had a joyful evening filled with laughter, connection, and appreciation, and I had an appreciation of the wisdom and the stories that were shared during our evening, and the seniors in Ward Three always have some very, very engaging stories. We also welcomed a new business in the area with a soft opening, and that business is Wheels Up. It's a promising addition to our local economy and a sign of continued growth in Ward Three. I had the opportunity to meet with North Clayton Ward Three residents to discuss our upcoming beautification projects. Their input and excitement reaffirmed our shared commitment to making our neighborhoods more vibrant, welcoming, and reflective of the pride that we all feel in our community. And earlier today, I was honored to, honored and joined by my colleagues on the dais for the ribbon cutting at the Ivy. It's a beautifully redeveloped apartment complex at 2135 Gottlieb Road. This project brings much-needed affordable housing to our city, and I'm deeply appreciative of the support and collaboration from the fellow leaders in the community, the business partners, the bankers, and our collective leadership in making this vision a reality. And I'm certain that the residents are looking forward to having this new addition to the community. Together, these moments remind me that progress is not just about policy, it's about people. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve, and I'm looking forward to continuing the journey with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gay?
Okay. So I have a couple items, but I wanted to address the motion that Councilmember Cohen just made. So during the election, the leaders were faced with a powerful decision. I was contacted through different means by people that are not part of our College Park government, and they asked me, how will I support this next election? And I told them that I'm going to support Councilmember Cohen, but we don't necessarily agree because collectively, the city is moving forward. So then I won't be selfish about how I feel, and so we gave our support to Councilmember Cohen, and so welcome back for four terms. Also want to say that normally, we talk around decisions, but as Larry said, we're veterans. The third thing I want to say is that, Mayor, I want to talk to you about the gift cards. I think the gift cards are at Winston Denmark's office. So what happens, Mayor, is that when the festival comes, unlike many festivals, we don't charge vendors to vend. So we don't charge them $1,000 for food trucks or $500 for food trucks. Only thing they give us is a gift card. So that's the first thing that you should know, that we don't charge vendors. The, several of the festivals and events, these vendors pay thousands of dollars, they leave their angry, they prepared their foods, they don't make any money. But in the case of the Ward Four Festival, Citywide Festival, we don't charge vendors. But we do get the $65 gift card and then the $100 gift card. But what you're not telling the public is that at the festival, the first part is to get a gift card to counsel recipients, to breast counsel recipients. So because of you, that was denied at this festival. Because of you and Steve Alexander, false allegations, there was a decision not to give those women on that stage those gift cards. So that's number one. Number two, what you're not telling the public is that those gift cards are given to employees at an employee luncheon. Every last one of those cards, every employee that work here will tell you that they get cards. So thanks to you, this year, we had planned to give the gift cards at the senior luncheon. Because what we found out, Mayor, is that not all of the employees are on hourly wage. So the people that worked the festival was given time and a half, but because of the salary people, they didn't get any extra compensation. So the decision was made to give the cards out at the employee luncheon. So if that suffice you and your group of constituents that you support, that's what we'll be doing with the cards. The other option was to give the cards to some of the nonprofits, but because the staff worked so hard, we thought it was only fitting to give them the cards. So the cards at Winston Denmark's office, and maybe he'll bring them over during employee luncheon, and perhaps one of the police officers can give them out. So that's the story of the cards. I want to thank the public for voting for the senior tax exemption. The people in Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Three, and Ward Four, they voted at 80% of the electorate, so I guess that's a mandate. So after four attempts, for those of the people who talked about it, it passed. The next thing I want to talk about a little bit about is the next thing I want to talk about is the ordinance that you relinquished your gall to talk about, and just to give some facts, because you didn't give all the facts. You didn't give all the facts. What you didn't say was that salary increase is not based on population size. There's not a statutory that's based for salaries. So the OCGA 36, 35, 34 is not based on population size. The second fact that you misstated was that there are five steps in elected officials getting a raise. Y'all can smile, you got what you want, relax, it's all good, I'm going to be through in just a minute. That's five steps in employees getting their raise, and this is what you didn't say. The first step is that tonight, it was going to be put on the agenda to approve the process. As the councilwoman told me today, we got to start somewhere. That was step one. Step two, what you didn't say was that it has to be advertised. So we all know that there's three more council agendas. So the advertisement was going to happen, had we approved it. Step three, what you didn't tell the people is that it needs to be published three consecutive weeks. So that was very possible that had we approved that tonight, you would get three consecutive weeks. So that was very possible that had we approved it tonight, you would get three consecutive weeks. Step four, what you didn't tell the people, is that it had to come back to this body, which would have been the second meeting in December, to vote on it. The city attorney told me Sunday, well Monday, that there's no issues in the law with those four steps. All those four steps are the process that any municipal officer, any municipal municipality has to go through. So there was nothing wrong with the four steps. So for you to tell the people it's illegal, you shouldn't say things that are incorrect. Because the first four steps is what any municipality have to go through. But watch this. Step five, Mayor, was a fundamental difference between, does it take place in the next term or does it take place in the next election? One argument is that it takes place in the next term, which the next term is in January, when Joe and I start our new term. The city attorney thinks it takes place in the next election, which will impact, one, will impact you, Jamel, and Tracy. What you're not telling the people today is that we made a decision to put it on the agenda tonight because we felt that it should impact you all in the future and Joe and I in four years. So it was a selfless legislation. Does this attorney tell you today's turn at Denmark? Conversation today was to put it on there and let it impact them. When? After their term. Wasn't that the conversation?
Sir.
And that, so, if you're gonna put it out there, put it out there right. Don't put it out there and confuse people. Now, the mayor of Atlanta makes $220,000, people, and he just gave himself a twenty percent raise. So it makes $236,000. It has nothing to do with population, has nothing to do with the budget. Has to do with three people voted, thirteen people voted on. It voted on thirteen to two. The second thing I would like to tell you all is that the item that we was gonna present tonight was gonna be full-time. It was gonna change our positions to full-time because all my colleagues are working over forty hours. They're not volunteers, they're actually putting out. So this, this item was gonna go to you all becoming full-time workers. So that's, that's what I wanna say about that. But it was taken off the agenda because we didn't want it a distraction. So it's taken off the agenda. But I wanna close by telling you one thing. Four people sat up here one time and got us to what we make now. Think about that. Years ago, four people sat right in these chairs while you enjoy the salary you make now. Now I could say more about it, but the doors might get busted in. So I'm gonna leave it politically correct. Now, let's talk a little bit about money. And, and the speaker used the word amazing. Here's a couple of facts that y'all may not know. The last city manager that sat there before this city manager, with our economic development director, took a contract, a bidder contract that says they're to get a commission from all of the land that they sell at Six West. But, one of our former mayor pro tems, of course, according to my belief, I mean bidder chair, not mayor pro tem, bidder chair, according to what I believe, forged the contract and changed the terms to say, you get compensated on all land that has sold in this city, irregardless. If you look at American greed, they do it with cut and paste. So then, let me tell you why city managers are so important. You thought that was sweet, watch this. So then, that real estate agent, Keller Williams, went upstairs and that city manager told a part-time, a temporary finance director, a temp, a temp, a temp mayor to write a check for $420,000, of which he got two checks. That's $600,000. I ain't talking about no raise now. Let's get real. $600,000 walked out of this house, public money. And not nobody up here is appalled.
I'm appalled.
They're talking about gift cards.
I'm appalled.
They're talking about a raise. We make $28,000 a year.
No, we don't make that much.
We make $24,000 a year. But $620,000 walked out of this house, right? And where's the outrage? That's the power of a city manager. Didn't even come before this council. You see, we want our city managers because with our city managers, we feel that we can move legislation. We don't want city managers that hold us accountable. We want city managers that'll let us write $620,000 and walk out this door. So we'll see how this next phase plays out. So Mayor, when you talk about stuff, please get off of being obsessed with me and deal with what matters to the public. Fight for that $620,000 that you have not said one word about. But it gets better. So Six West has been sitting over there for ten, twenty years, and ain't one bit of dirt been turned. Over $50 million of your money has gone out the door and not one shovel of dirt been turned. But you down here is participating about gift cards.
Good lord, $250,000 for conservatives.
$50 million of, percent of your money. I was telling the city manager last night, how I used to have to bring pictures of mothers walking their child up Herschel Road 'cause they couldn't, wouldn't even give me sidewalks. Ambrose, the mayor, and, and, and old guy right here, wouldn't even give me side, oh Jack, Jack, wouldn't even give me sidewalks. But if you go out driving Six West, you gonna see all new infrastructure. And don't nobody even live over there. One, well, you got one house. But the point I'm making is, Mayor, we was getting ready to sell Six West to nicer. This is the power of a city manager. We was getting ready to sell Six West to nicer. We spent four months of due diligence. You talked about the money you owe Winston for doing a resolution that he really probably didn't even write. 'Cause actually, I wrote the resolution that gave to Winston, he just tweeted it.
There's no money there.
But, the night of the Vida vote, a group of men walks in the door, we, a group of four and a man walk in the door, and the vote was changed from giving to Six West after spending them eight months to a group that we don't even know. And then, fortunately, I was able to kill it. So as we speak today, the only thing I hear about Six West is maybe some apartment units are coming, maybe. But let me keep going. You remember when we stopped people from getting oxygen off your, to link with taxes? You remember we stopped that? I had to beg my colleagues to do that, and thank you for doing. But what y'all know here and what the mayor isn't telling y'all, this isn't just about the mayor, and Larry Vouch, Six West had about a hundred parcels that be owned, that owned the people, right Larry? It's about 360 acres, but about forty of them were people who wouldn't sell them. So we told these two women, go sell them and we'll give you commission. We didn't say go take 600 grand. We said we'll give you commission on them. We didn't tell you to go doctor the contract up and get 620. So they sold about forty, about thirty houses, right Larry? The remaining parcels is the mayor's uncle.
That is a lie.
He's the uncle to your husband.
That is a lie.
It is my belief, it is my belief that the last holdout is a family servant, agent, or friend. Let me rephrase. It is my belief, the holdout is a family servant, agent, or friend. The remain, but here's what the problem is. The problem is, why do you sit in by them means and listen to the strategy and refuse to leave, but your family servant, agent, friend, your husband, has to remain in leagues? So that means, Mayor, every time we talk about a strategy of eminent domain, you could go back and say, I need you to do this, whether you do it or not. Just like the perception of gift cards, you see, just like you wanna go and debase my character. You need to understand, Mayor, that people are watching you as well. You know, trying to, to talk about people and to try and ruin people's character, what in reality it does is people question you. And what you need to understand is, people have intelligence like you have intelligence. That is too true. And you should stop sitting in these meetings, hearing the strategy of the city, when the remainder leagues, his name is Thomas what?
Hills.
Thomas Hills. And what is true, is the Southern Law Poverty wrote an article that Thomas Hill is the leading white supremacist.
His attorney, his attorney.
Now that's true. That's in the Southern Law Poverty. So stop going down there, trying to make people look at me for trying to give people cards for breast cancer and trying to get that. And McCollin and honor, I hope that these next four years, you'll use that city manager to do right. Okay? Because just like you come and eat with me and say you gonna do this, and then you do the opposite, that's cool. But remember how this game is gonna be played. Okay? 'Cause just like he came, and just like Dr. Etterdaran left, and just like Stanley left, he could go too. So just make sure you use your power with him, not to condemn apartments. Don't use him to write documents that Dr. Etterdaran did to go and condemn Chester Gardens. You don't talk about that, do you, Mayor? Dr. Etterdaran, that last city manager, you walk up in his office and you tell him to sign a document, and you go over there and you condemn people, and you over there with them, and you play this game like, I don't know what y'all doing. And it's you! And then this city manager you got rid of, standing up against the slumlord because he won't pull permits. He don't even wanna pay his fair share. He tell that city manager, before I give your people $20,000 for relocating, I die. But you mad at her 'cause she's standing up for character? Because she won't go and use her office or city manager so that y'all can justify what y'all got going on? But you wanna sit up here like you just so innocent. Councilmember McCollin? That was the choice. It was the devil we know. That was the option. It was the devil we know or someone we don't know. This community took a chance on you, sir. They took a chance that you gonna do right by these people. You gonna do right by this city. So I'm gonna welcome this city manager, but we gonna keep it real. All day long, we gonna keep it real. Because one thing y'all need to know, eighty percent of my ward voted for me. Now this man been me, behind that city manager back. He taking documents all out the computer, 'cause he's IT. He's giving the mayor all the documents that you see going up on Speak Up College Park. He me with his staff, I am so happy you finally got what you want. But did you know what cost you got it at? I'm happy for you. But you gotta think about the cost you got it at. You see, Dr. Etterdaran let a $620,000 check go out the door. She just stood up against y'all. She just stood up. So we gonna be watching and we gonna be seeing. And I'm gonna hold my colleagues to a standard. I was gonna thank the city manager for letting us speak with GDOT. They met today, and what we learned is that we can start putting GPSs into people's truck companies to try and divert them from coming on our roads. That was what I learned today. One last thing I wanna say about the salaries, Ms. Lindsay. One of the comments that Mayor Dickens said was that people, we can't attract talent to public service. We can't attract good talent to public service 'cause it doesn't wanna pay. Just like you can't get teachers. There is a fundamental difference of what people ought to earn. So, it wasn't anything about it's absurd to wanna make more money and this is what you signed up for. That ain't what we signed up for. We just signed up, and then we figured this out later. So, that's all I got tonight. And I'm canceling executive session because executive session wants to figure out, what are y'all gonna do about this $620,000? And since nobody cares but apparently me.
I care.
I'm going home.
I care.
All they wanna do and worry about is you getting a few extra dollars. They wanna let $620,000, and then they wanna get power so they can figure out, let me keep my agenda going. That's all this, it look like it is. So, I'm going home. I don't need executive session.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session for discussing of real estate and litigation?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilmember Gay, what is your vote?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. We'll enter into executive session at this time.